Nikki, can you call the board?
Yes. Nikki Austin is present. Jim Curran.
Present.
Chris DePry is absent. Eric Cottrell.
Present.
Mike Brassa.
Present.
Teresa Keen.
Present.
Dylan McGuire.
Present.
Terry Montgomery.
Present.
Phil Bosberg.
Present.
All right, I need a motion to approve the agenda with one change. I would like to move the informational activities report up to the top of new business to allow Jeff to get out of here after he does his presentation. Event is to get to, so if we could move that up, so we'd move D up to A. Makes sense, or no, we'd move C up to A.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with that change from C to A.
Second.
I'm gonna take Phil because I heard him next to me and I wasn't sure which one of you guys. So Terry is a second, or Terry made the motion seconded by Phil to approve the board, the agenda for the board meeting tonight with the change on our new business to move the high school activities athletic participation report to item A. All those in favor by voice vote say aye.
Aye.
Nay. So we have, the first thing we have is our consent agenda. Lots of things, so we need to approve the agenda for the meeting of 5:13:24 and our special board meeting of 5:23:24. The approval of the Parkside Elementary Safety Drill, approval of the Middle School Safety Drill, approval of Abraham Lincoln Elementary Safety Drill, approval of support staff hiring. Courtney Burt, Northside Educational Assistant. Alex Hernandez, Parkside ELL Interpreter. Angela Keepers, Abraham Lincoln Educational Assistant. Laura Leopold, Abraham Lincoln Educational Assistant. Heidi Tisher, Abraham Lincoln Building Secretary. Jennifer Laviencio, Middle School Yellow Interpreter. Nick Siechlog, Weekend Security at Abraham Lincoln and High School. Approval of exempt staff hiring. Chandra DePry, Board of Education District Administrative Executive Assistant. Approval of professional staff resignation. Amy Garwell, Abraham Lincoln Special Education Teacher. And Melissa Chambers, Parkside First Grade Teacher. So we thank both of them for their, their service and their time in the district and hope they know they're very much appreciated, so appreciate their time in the district. And an approval of professional staff hiring. James Pickett, High School Business Education Teacher. And then again gracious and completely very much appreciative of the community donations. So Joey Anne and David Babler, $50 to backpack buddies. The Monroe Kiwanis, $305 to Abraham Lincoln for a wall sensory path. And ADK, $200 to Parkside's caring project. So thank you to all of the generous community donations. Looking for a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Eric, seconded by Jim to approve the consent items as presented. By voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is public comment. We have one person presenting public comments, so I will have you come up and we do limit it to five minutes if possible.
I think I had it down to three.
Oh, there you go.
So first of all, great job on getting this new school going. We're neighbors and I watch every day as I go by. So I'm Melody Fletcher and I was the physical education and health teacher in Monticello and a coach for 37 years. And probably one of my biggest roles was I was an advocate for our students, especially for our girl athletes. I'm now a resident of the Monroe District and this winter I started attending the, the boys' basketball games. And the first time I went there, I, I looked up at the school song and I thought, what? And the song says, one of the lines, "Here's to our fellows." And I just thought that was really odd and outdated. I thought, I gotta look it up on my phone. So I Googled it right there during the game and the first definition says, "A man or a boy." And number two says, "A person in the same position involved in the same activity." And I thought, I think that word stretches the definition of an athlete, especially a female athlete. I think it leads heavily towards the males. And I think our students don't deserve a second definition to define them. When a girl walks through the gym and she looks up at that sign and sees "fellows," does she think that they're talking about her? When female athletes are cheered on by their family and coaches, do we hear the coaches and the families say, "Great job, fellows?" I think that would be pretty confusing. In the past five months, I've had several conversations concerning the word "fellows" in the school song. I learned that when the girls won the state basketball title, there was a push to change the word. And in one parent's words, they were shot down rather quickly. There was also hope that when the new school song sign went up, it would be changed. And that didn't happen either. Last week, I spoke with Dr. Phig about my coming here tonight. And it was he who told me, actually, when the song is sung, the students don't sing "fellows." He said they sing "players" or "students." And I thought, yes, the students have already spoken. They just need an advocate to change that one little word up there. Players would be good, I think. But I think the word "students" is all-inclusive to our athletes, our artists, our musicians, anybody and everybody. I feel that the Monroe District is very careful in the area of inclusion and the respect of our students. This change could be simple and it could be great. The word "fellows" has been in the school song forever, since all a girl could do was be one of a select few to be a cheerleader with no opportunities to be an athlete. Title IX changed that, thank goodness. Some say of the song, but it's always been that way. And I say what always has been, isn't always right. I'm not one person coming here before you to ask you to change the word "fellows." But I am asking you as the district leaders to make the change. A written change that is perhaps over 50 years overdue. A change that could include all of our students. A change that would cost no money and it would make a lot of students happy. We have a new high school. We could have a new updated inclusive word, a new sign. I think the timing is right. Thank you, and I hope that we can see some progress on this. Any questions?
We really don't, unfortunately, we don't go, we don't dialogue on it, but we really appreciate you coming and we certainly listened to everything you had to say.
And I appreciate being heard.
Thank you. That leads well into our first item, which is our athletic activities participation report.
Yes, thank you for moving this up to the top. My iPad just turned off. You're looking at sheet one, the participation report and GPA report. It, you know, kind of shows that we are back to our pre-COVID participation percentage, which is, which is awesome. Enrollment obviously going down, but our participation percentage is, climbs back up, which is great. And then obviously the corresponding GPAs, which is always nice to see that the more you participate, the more you're included, the more you do stuff, the higher GPA you get. Obviously, participating in activities and athletics teaches those skills of time management and being productive, so, and obviously we enforce attendance policies and things like that, so there you go, you got GPA that is included with, with participation. Any comments about that sheet first before we move on to the next one?
So Jeff, actually, just, just one here, and I don't know if we talked about this when we looked at it, and I'm not sure if you were able to make it when we had the last time, but we had talked about potentially having activities on here too.
It says in, in active.
It'll say, the next one is in any activity.
In any activity, so that's like our club, so that includes, okay.
Yeah. Moving on to the sport participation tracker, that kind of tracks the levels of our teams to kind of see if we need to make staffing changes, kind of where, where, you know, if there's any ebbs and flows. And overall, I mean, I can only go back to 2011, which is predates me, but overall, we're doing pretty good. There are some teams that have dipped over the years. You know, softball and baseball have kind of gone down a little bit. We've eliminated that third team. Wrestling has kind of went down and jumped back up. Cross country has jumped, went down and jumped back up. So overall, our participation levels, I think for our school, our size, are great. And then especially when we lead into the next part of, this is our first full year in the Rock Valley. It's all been a whirlwind, but yeah, first full year in the Rock Valley and we just found out last week that we took home the all sports award, which is essentially the strength of our department overall through all sports. So we just won that award last week. We won four or five conference championships this year, which is amazing, and sent several kids to state, just like every year, which is amazing, which is, obviously, we just have a great tradition of athletics. And it's not always just the same, same sports as well. It's, you know, golf won a conference championship this year, which is amazing, and they advanced on to the sectionals. And swimming had a really good year. Obviously, football and softball is usually really good, and tennis is sending kids to state. So overall, our activities and athletics is progressing very well and doing really well. And as a department, that's always what I'm looking to do, is have a strong overall department. So, you know, kudos to all our coaches who put in all the long hours and, and time away from the families to, to make these programs strong. So, that's all I have.
I think you're right, it's incredibly valuable for many of our kids. And along with what you said, we have, along with that, aside from the sports, our theater program was really strong this year with all the Jerry Awards they won. Our forensic team was really good, so there's lots of other things, so lots going on, so it's really, really strong.
Jeff, question for you, is there, going back to the, the first document, so jumping back a little bit, do you, do you see, and especially in terms of do not participate, have you all kind of looked at the data by demographic or anything like that? Even, I'm both curious on different identity markers, but is it different by kind of grades in, in high school, or what, what is the kind of data telling you on that front?
That I haven't really jumped too much into. I mean, I, I've talked to other schools on where we compare with other schools. We can get participation rate, and we're aligned with that. So I, I just think that's kind of, you can always have those kids that you just aren't, don't want to do anything. Which, you know, is that right or wrong? I don't know, but we're also limited on some things that we can do. But if you're, if that's something you want me to look into, I can try to find that information. Not sure if we have that information available. But, you know, we do have a strong population that competes in, in soccer in, in that regard. And, you know, we have a tennis program that extends over backwards and, and is available with, with your club to get equipment available, things like that. So I feel like we've eliminated some of the barriers that are out there, but there's always going to be barriers.
Is there also, maybe last year, we looked at, at maybe the number of extracurricular kind of options that are, that we offer right now? Is there, do we have a sense for kind of how, or maybe I guess that might be in the second document, but in terms of after-school clubs, like, I feel like it was real point of pride. We were offering a wide variety of things and even, I think, last year offered more things than the previous year, so I'm curious to be.
This year we offer more than the previous year as well. So there's always people coming, looking for some type of, given some type of proposal for a new club they want to start, which usually is just get the proposal, projected number of students involved, any costs associated with it, and who divides it. That one gets tricky, but we always have people step up because we, for many of those things, we don't offer on our stipend or whatever, I'm not sure anything, but they, they still do it. So our kids, I feel, have numerous, numerous opportunities to be involved in all sorts of different things, not just sports, but, you know, all kinds of different clubs and areas. But yeah, there's more this year than last year.
And did we add intramural sports? I couldn't remember. I thought we added that last year.
Participation rate was very, very high in boys' basketball this year to be, I think it was like 65 kids. And we only have three teams, so we can't carry that many kids on a team. So Coach Bassett started an intramural league that had 40 players in it and six teams. My son was part of one and he had the time of his life, it was fun.
It's pretty awesome.
It was awesome.
That's the only intramural that I'm aware of.
Not necessarily it's an official intramural.
No.
Just something Coach Bassett did because he had a lot of kids that were interested.
He ran, what, four weeks?
Yeah, a couple of weeks of that, you know, the guys from the team would come and I think officiate, so.
They did. Resting players, set up more coaches as well.
That would be nice to be.
It was very fun.
It was very fun to be a part of that report so that you could see that.
Maybe along with what Terry's saying, I don't know if this is where you were going for Terry, but having, so we've got the, all, in any, in any activities stat, but then we've only got sport participation, right, for the, so maybe this is under your purview, Jeff, I don't know, but like that, I would love to see the full range of things that we offer and how many kids are actually participating in kind of each, because there's some like pretty unique and innovative.
Is inclusive of all the clubs and things that we officially offer.
You just want to see a list of everything.
Right, and how many kids are involved in it?
Some of that is represented in the, I hate to bring up this report because it was very painful for me for a number of weeks, but that five-year self-evaluation and that discrimination that we had to clean up several times. But some of that is captured within that report. I don't know if it's broken. It's probably, it's not going to give you the level of detail that I think you would probably want, Jim, but it does have the percentage of non-white students participating in a variety of different sports and activities. And so, and it, it's not just sports, it, it details a lot of the different clubs and activities in high school as well.
We have a ton of normal clubs that offer any type of competition. It's just a club that they're involved with, something they're passionate about, so we could try to find numbers of who's involved with that, but I think they haven't flowed with who shows up, like in our club or science club or math club or whatever it might be.
So as I look at these numbers, the only one I have a question on is the cheer program. Everything's consistent until you get to cheer and you look, there's a 75% drop from fall cheer to winter cheer, and also from 23 winter cheer to, to 24 winter cheer. Is there a cause there, or?
Cheer's been a, you know, it's been an animal for us the last few years, bouncing between different coaches. We had a really good coach a couple of years ago who moved on and has been struggling to find a quality replacement for that.
I don't think it's fair to put it all on one reason, but consistency of who's leading that program was about an issue.
Is there a plan in place?
Trying. I'm gonna work with Ron on some stuff.
Believe it or not, there, there's not a whole lot of people out there that are willing to step up and take that job.
I know nothing about cheers.
I was just saying, it sounds like Mr. Frose, he really wants to lead the challenge.
It just concerns me when you see a 75% drop. That's, that's huge, and that program I know is meaningful for a lot of young women.
There's, I don't want to bring up an open session, but there's, there's quite a few issues we're aware of why that happened. We're trying to fix it.
Maybe to the flip side.
We don't have a cheer village.
To the other side of things, to see the, maybe it's just kind of an aberration, but girls' tennis going from kind of 30, 25, 27 up to 44 this year, like, that's a, that's a.
I think that's what shows you though, what a really good dynamic person leading any type of program can do.
Coach Warner just continues to, you know, impress everybody, honestly. When we, when I first approached him, again, that was tennis program was struggling, bounced between a few coaches and a few different years. And, you know, he was coming off his student teaching, I think, and he first came back and I approached him and said, hey, we need a tennis coach. He goes, I've never played tennis, I don't know anything about tennis. I said, yeah, but the kids love you. You know, they, they walk to your classes, they, they hang out with you in between, you know, like, I need someone who can motivate kids. You can always learn about tennis. So we're obviously starting to see that come through. He is definitely taking that to the next level. Obviously, he's our boys' and tennis girls' coach now. His, his brother is now involved, right? He, he's constantly picking the brains of older tennis coaches in the conference and developing and going to camps and clinics. So you're starting to see, you know, he's sending kids to state all, you know, every year now. So it's all coming together and it just keeps growing, which is amazing, so.
He took a different approach, huh? I was beginning to speak to coaching, which is hard, I think, for some other coaches. But he, he took the approach of, I wanted to make tennis a fun place to be and where everybody wanted to be. And then later on, once I got a whole lot of people there, we started getting good.
It's true, I like it.
He's a great recruiter.
So yeah, we need a really dynamic, good coach.
So thank you for putting this together, I appreciate all the.
Good luck, mate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we'll go back to A, so discussion approval of the 2024-2025 temporary operating budget.
Yeah, so this, obviously, we do this every year. This is kind of a procedure that every district should do. I won't say every district does because I know some don't, but basically, even though it's very early and there's a lot of, of budget development that'll happen over the summer before we put together our budget in September, that then goes to the annual meeting in October and gets updated a couple of weeks later when the final state information comes. In order to, by statute, so in theory, in order to expend dollars, we have to have board commitment to a budget and to dollars. And so that's why we adopted temporary operating, operating budget in June so that we can then expend funds throughout July and August and September until we get to the annual meeting in October. And so obviously, budget development has been going on for a long time. We, we had some discussion earlier in the year and we actually made some, a, a number of cuts, which I'll be referencing and talking about here in a little bit. And then obviously, as we look forward toward, moving toward the annual meeting in October, there's going to be further budget discussion that we're going to have. And actually, at the next board meeting, we'll be talking a little bit about the state of school funding and operating referendums and what's really been driving that across the state and why so many districts are in that boat. And it may be a boat that we'll have to be looking at as well. So when you look at ourselves, I'm gonna, just because I like to have the percentages in front of me, I'm going to start with the, as far as the, the document I'm referencing off will be the document that says, oops, I clicked off my, yeah, the one with objects by percentage. So I think for most of you, that'll be your last document probably that's on your, or I shouldn't say last, it'll be the fifth one. And so I'm going to start actually by going all the way down to the bottom of it. And when we look at part of the issue, when we talk more next month or next meeting, it'll be about how funding isn't keeping up with the cost of expenses. For this coming year, obviously, we're looking at a CPI of 4%, which drives a lot of our cost for our employee, play costs. We're looking at ourselves, as well as many districts, are looking at high insurance, health insurance increases. We're probably a little better than some districts, but those numbers have really gotten out of control. And so now that we're not frozen, we actually have to face that animal again. And so that's a scary thing. And so when you combine Fund 10 with Fund 40, and we're just looking at Fund 10 here, 33 million with another 7 million in Fund, or in Fund 27, I should say, not Fund 40, it totals out to about $40 million of, of expenses that we have in those two budgets. And so if you think at 4%, what would you think some of that growth would be in cost for the year? You, you would think it'd be about 1.6 million, right? As you can see, we have 1.46% increase in our expenditures, about a little over 500,000. And that's because we, we took the step of making that over $900,000 of reductions that we made earlier in this last school year in preparation for this coming school year to help offset that. So the reductions we intended to make, we made, and they really helped offset that increase. We had, at the time, as you might recall, we were anticipating a deficit of about 3.2 million prior to making those reductions. And we were hoping that we could get down somewhere in about the 2.3 million dollar range. Unfortunately, our revenues aren't going to, I'll talk about those in a second, aren't doing quite as well on the reduction side as our, we reduced expenditures, we'd like the revenues to be going up. Did go up, they were down further than we thought. And so we're at about right now, about 2.6 million. What drives that? What's striding some of the difference is, quite honestly, some of the health insurance costs, but it's also been driven by our declining enrollment. And when declining enroll, or when the revenue limit was set at zero, you'll recall, we used to have conversations about how sometimes that helped us as a district because not only your base couldn't go backwards. And so not only did you get to keep your whole harmless money, you got to keep your declining enrollment money because you couldn't have a smaller base than you had the previous year on your revenue limit formula. Now that we've been allowed an increase on the revenue limit formula, you can go backwards to the amount of the increase. And so instead of saying, oh, hey, here's a new increase, and then here's another new increase in year two, much of that second year's increase goes away because the declining enrollment exemption now comes into play. And so that's impacting us somewhat. If you go, and if you start at the top then and scroll down until you run out of 10 Rs, you'll see the grand total there. We're going from about 31 and a half million down to 30,650,000. So about a 2.6% decrease. Part of that is ESSER funds, part of that is the retiring referendum. But the, the fact that we've contained our expenditures, but our revenues are moving backwards is, is why our, our deficit isn't where we would like it to be. We talk every year when we set our budget for the annual meeting that we typically are okay running a deficit of about 600,000 to a million dollars, roughly 800,000 is where we a lot of time shoot for because we'll usually bring our budget in under and save those dollars. So really, when you talk about one and a half million of operating referendum going away, that's where we were kind of shooting for that 2.3 million. Because if we did choose to backfill that by looking at a referendum question that wasn't, wouldn't add any dollars onto our, our levy, it would just be maintaining, it would kind of get us into the range that we wanted. So we're not quite there, but we're close. On the revenue side, a couple of things I'll point out. Obviously, right now, it shows the property tax being reduced. I think when we get to September and into October, barring, you know, any discussion about referendum, I think that number would be even lower because if you scroll down to the 621 line item where equalization aid is, right now, we're basically holding that the same as last year. That number should be increasing. We won't get our first estimate of equalization aid until July 1st. Obviously, as those of you who've been on the board, and I think everybody was on the board last year, you know that we don't get the final equalization aid amount until October 15th, so we're well into the year, but we don't even get a preliminary estimate of it until July 1st, so that's yet to come. You know, I could have said, hey, I think we're going to get 18 and a half million. I would like to. All the reality is, is it doesn't really mean anything at this point. The revenue limit dollars are either going to be equalization aid or, or the tax levy. And so the more that comes into equalization aid, the less that'll go into the, the tax levy. So that'll be good news in the sense that I think it should be going up, not down from, from where it's budgeted at. The line right below that at the top of the next page is, is on the very first line where you see 730 special project grants. That's where you see that reduction from 440,000 to 85,000. That's the last of the ESSER funds, were used up last year, and so there's no longer those one-time ESSER dollars available. Districts that phased in their ESSER and used more in the last year. in their ESSER and used more in the last year and then had an even bigger cliff that they were battling as far as when those funds went away. And so that's why you've seen a wealth of referendum dollars or referendum questions this last spring, as well as going, looking forward into the fall because you had $0 increases for the two bienniums, or the two years of the biennium prior to this. And then basically, the dollars that were given for the 24, 20, 23, 24, and 24, 25 school years, although they were nice increases, they didn't address the fact that we were coming off of a zero and a zero. All those one-time dollars went away. And so you, if you look at it as a continuum, you need dollars increasing. Well, here it fell. It's starting to go up, but it never really put us back on the line of trend that we need. When you look at some of the expenditures, we, I'll look at salaries and I'll jump all the way down to the total. We're just under 15 million in salaries in our district. Again, a 1.45% increase because we did have the reduction of positions when we made the cuts earlier this year. On health insurance, you'll see the the health insurance, the 240 line doesn't show a lot of change there. But what's happening is, a lot of people are opting into the the high deductible. And so on my schedule or on my books, it's just a, some of those dollars now get coded down into the HSA reimbursement versus the the health insurance line. The bottom line is, the more people who choose the high deductible health plan, the better it is for us. And so because of that is why we don't see a much larger increase in some of the health insurance premium costs.
And that would only be new employees, right? Because they had to decide in December whether they were taking
But last year, yeah, but last year, we didn't know when we set the budget.
Got it.
And so last year was like, I have no idea what it's going to be, right? And so this year is kind of truing up to what it is. And yes, Terry, you're exactly right. Going forward, it'll only be as new people change. But every year, people have a choice in December.
Oh, okay.
So if they hear that, you know, hey, Ron or Joe or Todd did it, and it wasn't so scary, I think I'm going to try it too. It's going to be fluid every year.
Got it. Thank you, Ron.
What are you putting in, you know, 249 other old insurance?
That's those HSA reimbursements that I was just talking about. So if you choose the higher deductible, it lowers the cost of the health insurance. That's why you don't see that health insurance line jumping up about 10%. But there's dollars then that are going into the HSA side of the world.
You're saying that's the primary driver of kind of unexpected increase?
The health insurance, at the time I built the estimate, I was looking at about 8%. Right now, they're projecting it's going to be likely 11%. Many districts are in 15% to 19%. Now, we may do some things to mitigate that. We may say, we're only going to pay the full increase on people if they take the high deductible plan. And then if they want to continue in the full plan, they might have to make up some costs. There's different discussions that can be held around health insurance. Obviously, you could change some of the levels of deductibles again. But the fact that we're just kind of the first year into it, I'm not sure that that's going to be the the avenue that I would suggest. But it is, it is, I think everybody had hoped post-COVID that there wasn't going to be this explosion. But for whatever reason, there has. And whether that was just people quit going to the, get healthcare during COVID, and now they're getting caught up on stuff, or if they got other things came on and they got sicker because they weren't going to the doctor. But it's a real thing out there in the in the health insurance cost world right now. As we move forward for the summer, obviously, we'll be updating our revenue limit and our aid numbers as they become available. Most of the rest of our revenues don't change a lot. There are a few things that come into the revenue limit that will get finalized over the summer. Transfer of service, meaning Joe makes a claim for for new students to the district who came here from elsewhere, who get special ed services, we can make a transfer of service claim. Those will get finalized and told to us so we can put those in. I kind of put in an estimated number, but the real number will come. Open enrollment changes that happened during the course of the school year, this last year in 23, 24. There's a change that will go in and that'll allow a catch-up for some of those funds. Again, it's one-time dollars, but it'll help. I did put in, because you can recall last year, kind of, we don't know with vouchers, what students are in the voucher program, where they're going, how many there are, until in October, we get told, yep, you have voucher students, here's an exemption for your revenue limit, and here's a corresponding cost that you're then sending off to those voucher schools. Didn't know what it was. So just so it was built into kind of our levy at the moment, I just used 100,000 because last year was 99,000 and change. So I put 100,000 into the revenue limit formula that that impacts the levy side at the moment. And I put 100,000 of expense. That number could go down, it could go up. It's, we don't have any idea where it's going to fall until they tell us. Because we don't even know who the students are or where they're going. Other questions on this or areas you'd like me to talk more about? Again, this is kind of the preliminary. And then as we go through the summer, we'll continue to update it as we finalize staffing, as we finalize some of the increases. You know, for those of you, you know, there was, you know, not only a number of positions that we did eliminate when we made the reductions, we had some reductions in some of the supply budgets. We eliminated a route. We eliminated one of the tech support people, third-party tech support people supporting us. So we, most of the reductions you would see in the salary and fringe side, but some of them would impact the 310s or 320s objects. And then some would obviously affect the general supply, the 400 object lines as well.
So Ron, this this budget at this point, 2.6 million dollars in the red. And let's just be very clear, this is operating budget only. This is completely separated from any capital budgeting, correct?
Yeah, this, that's a great question, Mike. We have a number of budgets. We have Fund 10, Fund 27, which is special education, which has to be a net neutral. So at the end of the day, we have to transfer costs over there to make that whole. And so those two are somewhat married. But all the other funds, and I'll talk to you a little bit, I think what you're alluding to in a second, they're their kind of own entity. So we have a Fund 21, which is our activity accounts for our buildings, meaning like, if the senior class has an account, it's their money. It's not our money. So we have to keep track of that. There's also gifts that are in Fund 21. Fund 38 and 39 are debt service. So that's when we're actually making the payments against our borrowing for our buildings. And then Fund 40 is, and if you look at, there's all other funds in there, Fund 40 is the cost of the building project. And so in Fund 40, what you'll see is $3 million worth of interest revenues that we're expecting to make over the course of the year, depends when, how they come in. And when they, when those come in, you just need a number in there to kind of track it. And about 40 million of expenditures during the year for the building. All building project costs and revenues are separate. They're in Fund 40. They in no way impact or affect the Fund 10 operating budget. You can't co-mingle those. Fund 10, theoretically, can fund a building project, but we don't need it. And so we're not doing that. So none of our, none of our Fund 10 dollars are going toward the building project that we're doing. Fund 50 is our food service. Many districts end up having to send money to support their food service. We're very fortunate that our food service is in the black. And so we do not have to fund our food service. Our food service has its own fund balance and has been solvent for a number of years. And then along those same lines is Fund 80. Part of Fund 80 does fund our our school resource officer. But the majority of Fund 80 for the school district in Monroe is all the public library. And again, they have their own fund balance. They have their project that's going on right now. But they have their own separate budget in Fund 80. So again, that does not impact Fund 10. So that's a good clarification because the building project is going on, the library has some stuff going on. But those are separate funds that don't, aren't impacting our Fund 10 operating budget.
Summary, we could use Fund 10, go further into the red to support some of those other funds. But those other funds could never come back into Fund 10.
Yes.
So it's 2.6 million dollars in the red unless we balance this budget.
Yeah. And that's, and again, a big driver, that is our operating referendum. And I don't have it right in front of me. I'll, we'll talk about it next meeting. We've had that in place for roughly eight years. And so I'm not sure that's, don't quote me on that tonight because that's might not be the exact years. It's been in place a long time because we had a couple of different iterations of that operating referendum that have passed. And so those dollars have always been there. And actually, if you look at other districts, we'll talk about this more next meeting, they've been ramping that number up for a number of years. And it's grown quite significant where we've basically stayed at that same amount now for a long time. And again, I think if we consider that, it'll address much of that issue, right? Without having to to really change anything, it'll be just the same operating procedures that we've had now for a number of years. When you look at how much world spending on operating referendum per pupil compared to most of our neighbors and most of the districts in either the Rock or the Badger, were significantly less. And so across the state, operating referendums have become not only a normal cost of doing business, but it's becoming incrementally more and more of a cost of doing business. And those are some of the things we'll, we'll look at and talk about on the 24th.
So because of our fiscal diligence in the past, we have a significant fund balance, right? So at a, you said 600,000 roughly, we can make up during the course of the year. So at a $2 million operating budget in the red, what's, what's our burn rate? When do we run out of money?
Yeah. So I mean, you would, about two, well, there's, you know, run out of money completely, you'd be about four years. But I mean, really, after two years, you would probably reach a point where you were under the amount that we need to avoid short-term cash flow borrowing. Obviously, if you, if you think of short-term cash flow borrowing, it's basically living off of a credit card, right? You're, you're borrowing money until you you get your money that comes in. Because most of the revenues we receive come in the later part of the year. And so we have expenditures all year long. And so I always say, you would much rather be spending taxpayers' dollars on people and programs than spending them on interest to a bank because, because you have to short-term cash flow borrowing. So really, four years is the real answer, till you would like run out of your fund balance if you were churning through it all. Two years till you would have to look at that short-term cash flow borrowing. That's where if we, you know, would end up considering that, the operating referendum, just even just at the level that we're at now, not changing it at all. And if it was successful, then suddenly, that deficit gets down to 1.1. Hopefully, we can find some additional budget cuts in future years to offset even that amount. But at that $300,000 amount, meaning 800,000, we usually make up during the course of the year, the difference between 800,000 and 1.1, that 300,000, suddenly, you're talking, you know, six, seven years before you would even get down to the short-term cash flow borrowing number to be concerned about. So yeah, if it stays at 2.6, you burn through money much faster.
So Ron, what is that number? I was thinking it was 5 mil, but we're going to be below 5 mil. What is the drop dead number that we couldn't, we'd have to, you know, borrow money?
It's a little below 6 mil. It used to be 6 mil. It's a little below that now because of some of the other funds that we have available. But meaning, our, now that activity accounts are kind of sharing the same checkbooks and stuff, we have a little extra room in there. And some of our gift accounts are higher than they used to be. So that's really where it starts. Now, with that said, you can get it down to like five or four, and you probably only have to short-term borrow for like a month in November into December. So you're not really short-term cash flow borrowing for six or seven months.
Right.
You know, but the further you start dropping down below that 5 and 1/2, 6 million mark, that's when it really starts impacting. It's not, there's not a lot of interest costs if you only have to borrow a couple million dollars for a month. It's when you have to borrow 6, 7 million for like six months, that's when those costs really start to add up, especially with interest rates being higher now than they have been.
So we're on the precipice of
Yeah, if we would, if we would, if certainly, if you drop down a couple million, you're right there, kind of. And then if you drop again, right? Because we're about $8 million of fund balance currently, so.
This, this is probably going to be
You know, my numbers, I hear like at the budget.
I'm looking at the budget.
Yeah, so we're not going to hit the budget like last year, right?
Yep.
Ron, this is probably going to be somewhat of an unpopular statement, but the reality is, we cannot operate that far in the red for very long. So this board's going to have to look at either a referendum, a significant one, right? Or we're talking, what, a minimum 6% reduction in budget? I mean, that
Yeah, and I don't think, I don't think it'll be quite
On your educational programming.
Yeah, no, I agree. And the other point that I think needs to be made is, you know, it is people and programs, right? I mean, we've been living under revenue limits now for, since 1993. So 31 years. I started in 93. So it's kind of, I've lived under my whole career. And all the easy cuts have been made over the years, right? Anything that you can take away without hurting kids is gone. And so, yeah, if you, if you don't do an operating referendum, we can make, so we could live for a little while. But yes, at some point, you're either going to have to run that question, whether it's now or later, or you're going to have to make reductions. And right now, again, we typically are able to come in under. But part of what allows us the, the ability to, I don't want to say take that risk. We know that we typically always come in under. We've done it for 30 years. But you can take that risk when you know you have fund balance. So that if you wouldn't hit coming under, you have that safety blanket. Once it goes away, then you're back to kind of having to budget to a net zero. And so it does become a bigger reduction, a bigger impact at that point in time.
I would argue, we don't really have time. I mean, the budgeting process for a school district is monumentally slow. Like, like, we can't wait until next year and say, oop, we run out of, you know, funds for the following year. It's almost too late at that point.
Yeah, no, you always have to kind of be, yeah. And so whether we do it, because there's, there's the things to weigh certainly is, also, people don't like uncertainty or surprises, right? And so if, 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 if the operating referendum falls off, there's a drop, and then a year later, you ask to bring it back, even if it's at the same amount, they suddenly saw a drop and then, then a big increase versus if they're, if they're used to what they're paying now, and you can just kind of maintain that, that's many times people are like, it's not so much how much I'm paying, it's the certainty or knowing of what I'm paying versus the uncertainty. And so there is some truth to that side of the equation as well.
Ron, you had commented that our per pupil expense is lower than other schools in the Badger and Rock Conference.
What I'd said was actually, our, our, our operating referendum dollars per pupil is much less than than most of the others. Yes. Yep.
Other questions or discussions?
Again, we'll be discussing this much more at the next meeting and probably in the meetings in July and as we move forward. Till we get to the point where we know what we're going to, you know, either be asking or what we're doing as we move into the budget in September. And then annual meeting is in October. So there's a lot of steps in this process to play out, but it'll be a regular theme in the coming board meetings for the next couple, three months.
But if we want to go to an operating referendum, we have to have that question by July.
You don't have to have it by July. The, you know, You don't have to have it by July, the, the, you know, it gives you some advance notice there if you have it, but basically, the drop dead date would be, I believe it's the day after our second meeting in August. Now, with that said, you sometimes don't like to push right up against the drop dead date, so, ideally, I think what you'd want to do is the board coalesce around a, a number and an idea at the first meeting in August. Then if you had to finalize your, your legal language, you could do that at the, the second meeting in August, and then go forward. But what you couldn't do is run right up to that date, because then if you had any alterations or changes, you wouldn't have time to get the, the legal resolution changed and approved by the board, so, that's kind of your, your timeframe.
Thank you.
Just to emphasize, Ron, this is a temporary operating budget.
Yeah, this, this basically allows us to make expenditures during the course of the summer, continue with payroll and expenses until we have the final budget approved or presented at the annual meeting.
Ron, can you just give us the, the high level of how, how we got from three to two, six, seven?
Yeah, so part of it is, is driven by the health insurance costs, and the rest of it really relates to, most of it to the open enrollment, or not open enrollment, to the revenue limit and the per pupil, or not per pupil, the reduction because of the declining in enrollment and where that's shaking out in the formula as I'm building it right now. Again, we don't know where that final revenue limit's going to be until October, but as I'm building it out and costing it, you know, the, when you start looking at a three hundred and twenty-five per pupil increase, it's really not taking that, you know, with, with our students, which I wasn't doing before, but it's looking at that three-year average and trying to figure out on a moving basis, where do we think that's gonna be? And so obviously, that number moved throughout the school year last year, and at this point, I'm still only estimating what it's going to be in September, but I've had to change that estimate compared to the last time I did, and so it, it just kind of moves that number along a little bit, so.
And maybe just to, to go back one step, we were, we were staring down a three point two million dollar deficit, then made nine hundred and, and cuts. Then it sounds like you all are finding other efficiencies too, as you're finalizing staffing plans, and...
Yeah.
And so I, I don't want to jump over the place that's like, actually, we, we took a big, hard step, and you're continuing to find efficiencies, so it's, the things that are driving up are not just the...
It's really revenues, right? So yeah, so we, we talked about it at the start, where you're looking at a CPI of four percent, but we got our, we got our increase in expenditures down to less than one point five, I believe it was one, four, five, I gotta pull the right spreadsheet here. One point four six, and so, yeah, we did a good job of containing expenditures, and as you said, throughout the course of the summer, if we can find additional, we're going to do it. One thing, as we place new employees, as a placeholder, we always, you know, have some placeholders of, we're assuming that they're gonna take health insurance, however, young employees these days sometimes choose not to take health insurance, and they, they wait till they turn twenty-six, and so sometimes there's some savings in areas like that. When we get our final placement of individuals on the salary schedule, you know, sometimes we end up having to pay a little more, sometimes we pay a little less, but we, we put in a conservative number that we hopefully will hit as we build out the budget initially. So as those final placements get happen over the summer, we see some savings, then obviously, if there are other saving opportunities come available to us, we take them. And so, yeah, I don't see the expenditures growing or, or hurting us. Hopefully, if anything on the expenditure side, we might see some additional savings. It's really the revenues which are really the, the problem for us right now, and that, you know, and, and have been historically for a long time, it's, it's, you know, certainly revenue limits have forced us to take a hard look at our expenditure budget for many years, and, and that's okay, right? I think that's a, an okay and good exercise. But at some point, there are some basic revenues that we need in order to just maintain programming, and, you know, when you've already cut nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, you would like to think that that, you've made a good play to, to help offset that, and when that's still not enough, that's a bit frustrating at times.
But kudos, Ron, you managed to a one point four six percent increase, which nobody wants to see an increase, but in the inflationary economy that we're in and have been in, I think that's pretty commendable.
Yeah, well, I, I, you know, I mean, the, the board and the admin team, I mean, you know, there were tough conversations and tough stances that needed to be done to, to make those reductions that allowed that to happen. So that's, that's not me, that's, that's a whole group of people, so. So with that, if you would approve the temporary operating budget, basically what you're approving is the, the one that says, I gotta get the right name here, it is your last one, the Official Budget Adoption Workbook, and it's just the temporary operating budget for now, and then obviously, that's the form that you see that gets updated for the annual meeting as well.
Sounds good, so we are just, like Ron said, asked, being asked to approve a temporary budget. Ron always likes to give a presentation to us to make sure that we approve it before all of the final state numbers come in, so they can operate over the summer. Sounds like we have in our notes too, that we're gonna continue to have conversations on this throughout all of our next meetings. But looking for a motion to approve just the temporary operating budget as presented by Ron Ellison.
So moved.
Second. A motion by Terry and a second by Nikki to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five temporary operating budget as presented by Ron Ellison, Business Administrator. By voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Tell his name. Motion carries. Thank you, Ron, for all of that information, we really appreciate it. Next item is approval of WASB membership. I will turn that over to Fig to talk about the WASB membership.
WASB, Wisconsin Association of School Boards, that's the school boards professional organization. They did have a dues increase this year of about five percent. Their, their dues are based on professional staff enrollment, so they support public school districts with lobbying, legislative interpretation, legal, professional development services, so their annual convention is held each year in Milwaukee in January, which also provides additional professional development for the board. This is, this organization is, has a, I believe, a one hundred percent public school membership in the state.
Any more motion? Yep, any questions about the WASB membership?
I'm in favor of renewing it, but I want to go on record to say I'd like their lobbying arm to be more effective in getting more state aid to public school districts. I don't know how we send that message, but...
Agreed.
Thank you, Fig.
Yeah.
So I will make that motion unless...
Second, no, I'll second it. A motion by Phil and a second by Terry to approve the Wisconsin Association of School Board membership for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And again, this is something Fig just said a hundred percent of the school districts are in, and we've been in it for as long as I'm...
We get monthly newsletters and information from them about professional development, and then you have the convention as well, so, and, and I found the convention very helpful this year as a new board member.
More discussion? Otherwise, by voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll go on to the curriculum update. So, many of you were here for our curriculum meeting that would happen prior to this meeting. All of the administrators and Todd and Joe did a great job giving a summary of all of the data over the year, so we'll turn it over to Todd to see what he, to give us some of what we talked about.
Gonna give a brief statement about that, that tonight I reviewed and recapped kind of the year and the work that's happened across the district, then broken down by building and level, including what PD that's been provided to staff, a little bit of data, just a little bit, that gives us information as we monitor the work across the district, and then some next steps with some of the work for next year. A lot goes into the school year and all the different pieces and moving parts this year. We made some big changes with some of our systems work and how we support kids at each level. We had added resources at the high school, and then made some changes specifically at the middle school on how we serve kids, so I think we really feel good about the work, and then the work that's ahead and continuing to show growth. And then, mentioned, you know, we'll get that report card score, probably not till the fall, but we'll have some data this summer to kind of continue to look at and see where we line up and the progress that we've made, but we're feeling good about that.
Thank you for all your work, and thank you to the administrators and the staff too, because it's a lot of work putting all those reports together and analyzing all that data, so thank you.
And then I think on a different topic, just wanted to mention, summer school started today, so we had about a week of a window. So thank you to custodial staff and the teachers that had to do a quick turnaround, and all of the staff that commit to work for the three weeks. We had about a thousand kids that were roaming around today at the middle school with big eyes, because for some, it's a new space and a new place, and figuring things out, but day two will be better than day one, that's typically how it works, and... But it's been good, so. That's all.
I have one, one question for you, one last question.
You used that hour to...
About an hour and a half ago.
That was, that last one was a joke. But I'm curious, we got to go into a lot of detail, and I don't, I don't know if I want to put all the admin team on the spot, but I'm curious, like, y'all went through the steps, compiling all the data, looking at it, analyzing, like, what's, what are, what are a couple of things that, a couple of data points that you're most proud of as you kind of think back on this, this school year?
Yeah, I think if you look specifically at the data, I think I referenced the systems work and the changes. I think the number of kids that are getting services at the middle school and high school that were not getting services last year is a big, a big change for us. Still a lot of work to do in refining those systems and how we organize schedules and coordinate, you know, the resources, but I would say that's a biggie. I mean, Matt talked about it at the curriculum of how many kids we served for ELA in math, and then Jeremy referenced the detailed work that's going into providing high schoolers with support, which is already very complex. I would say that, that to me is a big shift, big change, a positive. I think at the elementary level, they've been busting their tail the last two years with a new ELA curriculum, prepping for a new math program, some pretty big changes, and they're already getting some pretty good results when you look at report card, but it's that continuous improvement process for them, and they're all in, so. I think those are the two things that I would probably list as, you know, celebrations for us of this year's work. Does anyone else to add? Good celebrations, all right. Good question, Jim.
Any other questions? I'll just echo, thank you for all the work and for all of, putting all of that together, and to all of the admin team and the staff and teachers who we know are doing a whole lot of work, so appreciate all of that and, and all they did to each and every year, but to make this a successful school year, so thank you. There's no action that we need to take. The next piece we're gonna do is the approval of an electrical contract. So I'll turn it over to Fig and his team to talk about the electrical contract.
So I am gonna turn this over to, to Tony Buss and Chris McGuire, and of course, we have Ryan Birkin here from, from Huffington Keel, and they're gonna go through the process that we use for electrical and share their, share the information, and go from there for the review and recommendation, so. Tony? Chris?
Just to be clear, what we're doing is we're trying to do the same thing that we did for plumbing and HVAC, so it's that early trade partner. Do they have this first? Sorry.
It's, uh, yes.
Is I'm ready first?
Yes.
Just want to make sure I'm speaking to it correctly.
Yep.
So, for the electrical budget, we had roughly seven point six million dollars in our budget, last budget round. Unfortunately, we are over that budget. We did get three bidders. One was at eight point four roughly million, one was at nine point one roughly million, and the other was at nine point three million. Those, those three contracts, it's a little bit complicated, there's two regular contractors, and then there's a partnership. So, there's Next Electric and PDC. PDC is a local electrical contractor here in Monroe. They, they serve a lot of the businesses here. And then Next Electric is an extremely large school contractor that C.G. Schmidt works with all the time. They are our number one school contractor for electrical. We also work with them a lot on this type of, of contracting, this design assist, trade partner. We feel like they are an extreme partner of ours. So, right now with them, so, so the way it would work is Next Electric would do everything on the inside of the school, and PDC would do everything on the outside of the school. So all the site lighting, all of the concession stands, basically just everything outside. We are currently eight hundred and six thousand dollars over budget on electrical, but we wanted to make sure that you understand that as the MEPs overall, we are actually two hundred and forty-six under budget. So, that number is really, really huge, right, eight hundred thousand dollars? But the big picture is we're still under budget with our MEPs, and the MEPs are the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. We did do an interview. We'd only interviewed Next Electric and PDC as the partnership. Reason why we did that was because there was an extremely large delta between the three firms. I, we also, I shouldn't say we didn't interview them, we did do scoping meetings with the other contractors. It's just that the scopes were scope to scope, so to say, as we, as we, I don't say, we made sure that nobody really, they didn't miss anything. The really unique thing about Next and PDC is, is they actually did a complete full takeoff. They went out and they got vendor quotes for the lighting, the distribution equipment, the generator, all the large commodities, low voltage systems, the performing arts theater, theatrical lighting, and the audio systems for the performing arts center. So, we really feel like their budget is the right budget. Again, we're still over eight hundred thousand dollars. Through this process, what we would be doing is, is we would be looking at areas of how we can get this back down. They have given us ideas, and we have ideas on our own. A, a lot of those would be like the lighting area, the performing arts, theatrical systems, and now, we, we don't want to just obviously cut those things down to the, to the bare bones, but we just want to work with the design team to, to see what we can do. Because right now, they are, the, the, those numbers are pretty high from what we normally see in performing arts centers. So, it's one reason why we want to bring them on and, and do this, this partnership, and work together to see what we can do. And that, that becomes a completely transparent process, so they're getting multiple bids from multiple theater people, and we are seeing all those and reviewing those accordingly. One thing, so on the next page, one thing I really wanted to explain is, is that, I bolded it, it's kind of hard to see, on the next PDC column, the third row up from the bottom is the pre-construction fee. So I believe last time, we didn't really, we didn't share that, how much that fee was gonna be. So right now, that fee is gonna be thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. So that is really what we're signing them up for in the contract, to get through this partnership portion of it. So it's not, we are not online, online for the eight point four ten zero seven one.
Yeah, to, to add to that, just like the conversation last time, for those of you that needed just to refresh your, you know, some of that... Sorry, I lost my train of thought.
The pre-construction versus the...
Yeah, so we really got hung up on the pre-construction versus the old, the overall contract, and like we said last time, we fully intend to have this a partnership for, for the whole project. But we're leaving that option open, where if this doesn't go well, for whatever reason, at the beginning, we're leaving that door open to where we could switch if we had to, so. Uh at the beginning, we're leaving that door open to where we could switch if we had to, so. That's what he's saying, we're not, we're locking in for the preconstruction, but um not necessarily locking in for the, the overall.
Is that a typical practice with a contract like this, or is there a concern you all have this making you want to approach it that way?
No, that's typical. We always leave that option open, I would say it's rare that we do cut ties at that time. Process has worked pretty successfully in the past on numerous projects and I've never had one go south yet, so.
Yeah, it's put in place to protect you so that if we, and we have a lot of data on our own um with how much schools that we do. So if we can see that the numbers really aren't aligning, then we can say, you know, we're, we're obviously gonna have conversations with them. But if it feel, if we feel like, you know, somebody's getting taken advantage, we can just say, you know what, we're gonna go out and we're gonna hard bid it. Thank you for your services, but unfortunately, it's just not how we feel. And that's something that we would obviously communicate with you as well.
Ryan, as our paid expert, you guys have, have had the chance to dig through this. I mean, most of my questions I had for you, you guys answered, it was, it's a pretty big delta between your low bidder. But.
Yeah, we feel very comfortable.
You've dug into it.
Yeah, we did, and next, the next PDC combo uh is what we would recommend apart from. If it was just dumped in our lap in an email and just said, look through this and make your decision, um apart from the interviews, apart from us kind of roundtabling about it quite a few times. Um we would make the same suggestion, I mean, Next is working in this space at a very high level, so being able to deliver and add partnering with a local firm. Um you know, partnering with a local firm sometimes is a, is a ploy, right? Because you try to get someone from, you know, trying to warm plezzies for it. But I, I think it's really great that it's a firm that's uh skilled and that can deliver and their scope of work is right sized to them. Um so you're not asking, you know, a smaller, medium sized shop to do uh an overly, you know, abundant job and. You, and they want to say yes, and then you stretch them and you learn where the weak points are, right? So it's nice to have a very large firm take on the lion's share and the local, somewhat smaller firm take on a right sized scope of work. And I think that works out really well. And we see this apart from, apart from local and not local, we see these partnerships in electrical a lot. Where someone will take on a chunk, either be exterior, interior, or high voltage, low voltage, or something along those lines where it gets broken out. Where one, a smaller group will do tackle a specialty and do it that way, in the way this is kind of being broken down, so, yeah, we support it.
Are the two contractors bidding separately then? Will it be two separate contracts or how?
We will, we will separate the contracts.
One other thing too, and you mentioned this, Chris, and Ryan or Tony, if you want to reiterate too, so. MEP contract, mechanical, electrical, plumbing is generally like one area. And then these are separated into three separate things and we're bringing the electrical part. So even though this is over budget from the projected estimate, it's under budget for that entire category of the project by almost a quarter million dollars.
This doesn't include any books on any of the credits or, or grants we might be able to look at?
It does not, we've started that conversation though, and so we had a rep from Focus on Energy. We, and I should say this, backing up. The coordination meetings for the design assist approach that we're talking, taking, that currently has onboarded mechanical and plumbing. We're having a weekly meeting with that group to work through this exact process of refining the plans and. This is, design engineering's on that call, construction's on that call, the subs are on that call, we are on that call. And it's topic by topic as we go through, and then this week, at the beginning of that call, we had a rep from Focus on Energy. In that, um just to talk about the process and, and what some of our approaches we could be for this project.
You said you guys have experience working with Next and all good experience?
Yeah, absolutely. They're one of our largest partners when it comes to electrical, they're, if not the largest.
The right size electrician is, is super important because they're always the ones that get jammed up at the end of a project and they can cause you to go over on schedule really fast. That's also a pro of why the partnership too, whether it's partnership or whether it's contracted separately, is an opportunity to shi- share resources with PDC if it comes down to that. And that was discussed at the interview process that they'd be looking at. Potentially seeing if they can, PDC would be willing to take on more scope if, if it's right for PDC too, so. I think that's good that we have two companies that we can lean on for resources.
And, and Tony personally has, has um experience working with, with the hospital. There is a large hospital project where PDC teamed with Faith Technologies, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, kind of in a similar fashion.
He is, he does have experience doing this in the past.
I was just meeting with our uh, uh our lead for the Abe on Friday, and so. PDC's doing the, the electrical portion of Abe and uh. He was really impressed by A, the number of people they brought on site uh to get that project rolling. Sometimes they wait, right, on the electrical side with the, with the stuff they could dig into, they got people on board. And then they, you know, kind of one of the luxuries of having a local was. One of their other projects had a delay for a couple of days and so they dumped all those extra guys into the project, and so he was ecstatic. He said, uh, you know, because usually it's, 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 you're behind, not ahead of the games.
As long as they come our way rather than going the other way.
Yes, exactly, so, but that, that's what, what Tony was saying is I think if it gets toward the end of the project and if, if Next is, you know, dumping their own people in it. But they say, boy, it'd still be nice to have some more people that can reach out to PDC and say, PDC, do you have some, some local electricians that you can share?
Right now, we're currently, Next is doing our Fort Atkinson schools, it's like five or six different schools of remodeling for one summer. And so they're gonna be finishing this summer and then it's gonna, this will play in pretty well, schedule wise. So that would be PDC, would be doing the full, it's a, it's a combination of PDC and Musco, Musco, or we, we might open that up. See if somebody else wants to do the actual supplying of the, the supplying and the design of it. Musco up is typically the, the lead in the state.
Thank you for doing all the work, any other questions? It sounds like you're unanimous in your recommendation, and although this one was over budget. I think like you guys mentioned, it's important too, I just read right that the total clinical electric plumbing budget is still two hundred and forty-six thousand under budget. Any other discussion? So looking for a motion to approve the contract to Next and PDC.
So moved. Second?
Motion by Mike, second by Eric to award the electrical contract to Next PDC. Although some freezer by voice vote, signify by saying aye.
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 Close name. Motion carries. Right, so the next piece we have is um approval of structural bids. To start that discussion.
So this was, uh, these are parts that were taken from the, the most recent two bid packages and uh CGS has gone through and organized these and. Just turn that over to, who's Tony, you or Chris?
Me, this time.
Okay.
I'll make it very clear, he's got the trade management process, I've got the, the hard bid, so that's what I want to start off with. Um everything on this category, this executive summary here, um these, these five categories are truly hard bids, competitive bids. Uh this is different from that MEP trade management part, part of the process. Um typically, we don't see that with these types of scopes. Uh I have seen it once on a rare occasion, but um so just to be clear, we are signing these folks up with approval here today. Um to move forward with the full contract amount, um get moving with procurement of materials and things like that. The, I will be clear too, just kind of talking about the process, the last bid package that we had out was bid package two and bid package three. Um so bid, they've bid together, bid package two was mostly structural, bid package three was athletic fields. Um we prioritize these five work categories over the rest of the work categories, we do have bids in for some of those and we're going through some of those. But we prioritize these five because they are crucial in meeting the schedule. Um concrete, first of all, we need to get that awarded so their, the reinforcing bar shop drawings can be fabric, be created. In order to get them approved by the architect so that we can get rebar fabricated for the footings, uh which will be starting in um later this summer. Precast and structural steel are usually crucial um lead time products. So those are the ones that, that have longer lead times, they need to go through that shop drawing process as well. And then once they get approved and put into manufacturing, there's, there's a lead time associated with that, so. Um we're, we're really gonna be get, hitting the, hitting the ground hard with these guys right away. Uh to get this stuff underway so that the structure can uh go up this ball and stay on track. So um I will say um that for all these categories, with the exception of concrete. CG Schmidt received the bids and, and we compared things and, and we are presenting the results here as you see them. Um I will start off with concrete and say that it was bid a little bit differently because CG Schmidt self-performs. Self-perform is using our own forces to, to provide, to provide concrete services, so. So we do that on a lot of projects, sometimes we compete for it, sometimes it's negotiated. In this situation, we competed for it, a hard bid against other contractors, so. Um what we did in this situation was bids were due to uh the mineral school district at the bid time. So that there was no um, there was no way CG Schmidt could see the competition's bids, they're all due to this district. And then after the bids were received by the district, they're shared so that they can compare apples to apples and move forward.
After the deadline.
After the deadline. Um so with that said, I think I'm, I'm just gonna kind of go through um each of these categories real briefly and then um ask questions along the way, of course. Um so concrete, CG Schmidt, just, just so everybody's where we, the way we do this internally is we have a different group. Uh we call them our self-perform group out of Milwaukee, they, they kind of estimate it and put together the bid for it. So that's, that's a different group from, from Todd, who's been here a lot presenting on budgets. You know, we collaborate on stuff, obviously, but it's a separate group taking a fresh set of eyes, look at things uh to compete on the project, so. Um we, we did bid that and it's all building concrete, so anything from like the exterior stoops, which are the foundations right outside the doors. And inward to the building are, are in this bid package. Uh there's another bid package that's gonna come later for site concrete. Which is all your sidewalks and everything to deal with athletic fields and concrete um patios and things like that. So this is just for the building concrete, um CG Schmidt was low and Lewis, uh they're out of like Schofield Wa- Wausau area, they are the other contractor. So any questions on, on concrete before I move on?
You guys are doing the, the work, who's supplying the, the actual mix, is it a local supplier?
I don't know that, actually. I, I encourage Bard, I know we got numbers from Bard and then Advanced, we got numbers from, I think both of those would be considered. Obviously Bard would be much more considered local, but I don't know who was low on the mix, to be honest, but.
Ryan, you had a chance to review these, it's more important to us now to hear your, when we're talking, these guys bidding against themselves, right?
Yeah, we uh, after I came to the district, they got forwarded over to us, um reviewed through um the structural concrete. In this case, it's, it's real straightforward, there's a little bit. And one of the challenge, biggest challenges or efforts in just taking in bids is scoping them or leveling them, whatever terminology you want to use to make sure that. There's no scope gaps and no doubling up and, and those type of things and. The benefit of having um your CM self-perform certain things if they're low is that they have the most informed idea of what the scope is. And so um the benefit there is that they're going to check the, all the boxes and what the work that has to be done is. And so when they're low, that's really beneficial, when they're not low, then obviously there's a lot of work to do, and they were considerably low um in this case. And so it, for us, from our opinion, is very straightforward, we trust their ability to perform the work. And um, and we know that they've, they've picked up the scope as it truly is and they were low, so I think it kind of, for me, it checks all my boxes, so.
So concrete includes footings, foundations, everything within the walls that needs concrete?
Pretty much, so you've, you've hit most of it and then footings and foundations are the big part of it, the other big part of it is slab on grade and the elevated slabs like on top of the metal deck or. Uh this includes any kind of, we have precast plank, it's like a three or four inch topping on top of the precast plank, so yeah. Anything that's uh poured in place concrete inside the building, basically. Alright, so I, I know you're probably gonna approve all this at once, so if there aren't any questions.
I was just gonna stop because we were, you were gonna let us know how you wanted us to do that and so I don't have any direction and if we want to, or if you want us as a board to decide. If we should approve these at once or as separate contracts, you indicated that you let us.
So then that was, that was the question that we talked about, so we had put these, we'd put these in as five separate, not knowing if we were gonna go at these. So these are hard bids, right, so these are the numbers, when they get approved, they get approved. But uh, so there's these, the five areas here in this that we're gonna look at. So we could, we could have him go through all of these and you could approve them all as, as stated. Assuming that you're gonna advocate for the, for each one, I'm guessing probably toward the low.
Yep. Yeah, so we did that.
Let's see, Michael? I would propose we do it separately, it's just cleaner, less opportunity for confusion if, if we're getting things mixed up as we go.
That's fine.
Right, then, then that's not a problem because we're, we're prepared to do that.
Yep.
So um, so then we'd be ready if there's any other questions and.
Any other questions on concrete? And again, that, that came um just over three hundred thousand under budget, so we're under budget, three hundred thousand dollars on concrete. So looking for a motion and a second.
Second?
A motion by Mike and a second to Terry to award the concrete building contract to CG Schmidt. I would quote all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close name. So we'll move on to precast concrete.
Absolutely, okay, so precast concrete. Um and just to, to make it clear, thanks for mentioning, Teresa, that they're un- under budget. Anything in red with parentheses around it is under budget, anything that is just black text is over budget. Um and the good news is, you know, a lot of these are in the budget, which is great. We do have some other packages that aren't presented yet that are over, so I'll give a present, presentation or brief, brief update on that afterwards, but um these are all great news. Um precast concrete, so we got some good uh bid coverage on this because of the, the scope of the work here. And precast concrete is, any of the exterior walls, we call them sandwich panels that are uh concrete with insulation sandwich in the middle of them. They'll be the facade you're looking at uh when you see and drive by the building. Um also within precast concrete are things like structural elements on the inside. Uh precast plank is what we refer to it a lot as, um those are certain areas where you ne- need extra strong floor systems. Um so that precast concrete spans um from column to column and then there's a, there's a topping that gets poured on that, so. That's what we're talking about, we're talking about precast concrete, uh we're talking about structural precast concrete of the five bidders. Um of course, you can see the different results there, Wells was the low bid uh fairly significantly. Uh and then consistently uh the, the bids went up from there. Um Wells was involved helping just budget some things uh early on and they've been working with the architect on, on some finish options. So I feel like they know the scope really well. Um you know, they did say that, you know, they were under budget from the last go around, so they acknowledge that, so I feel like their scope is, is rock solid. Um not, not too far off the base, I mean, a couple hundred thousand is, is mid-state. And they, so some of you might know, might know of architectural precast out of, out of Brown Town, they're a precast contractor that, that is local or, or was, I will say. Uh Midstates acquired them uh this year, so. Precast or architectural precast out of Brown Town is now a part of Midstates concrete and they're out of Beloit. So they do have a little bit of a local tie just because of their plant in Brown Town, but um to the tune of an extra two hundred thousand dollars. Um and then stone cast JP Cullen and advanced precast, most, four of these five contractors are, are manufacturers that, that, that hi- either do their own erecting or hire it out. So these numbers include supply and erecting, precast, with the exception of JP Cullen, it's, it's reverse. Um JP Cullen is the erecting contractor and then they, they accepted bids from suppliers to, to ma- to match with their number in cemented building, so. Yeah, any, any questions on precast?
These are installed prices.
Yes, these are, these are installed prices, yep.
And I'll say from our, our perspective, Wells seems like the best choice, they've been engaged from early on. I think a lot of what's informed about window placement, about finishes, about a lot of the renderings that everyone has seen of the exterior of the building. Came with uh PRA working directly with Wells. And so their, their knowledge of what we're expecting and, and. And so, their knowledge of what we're expecting and want out of this product is very high at this point, probably well beyond anybody else that we bring on, they have to have an on-ramp period to get up to speed, so, and the fact that they're low, it just makes a lot of sense.
Have you worked with them on other projects?
Yeah, so some people, I personally haven't, but some folks in the office have. Carl, that's also in this job, has worked with Wells before in the past and has a good working relationship, like numbers in his phone of folks at Wells that he's, you know, has a history of working relationship with, so. I personally have not, I've not done a lot, other than precast plank, I've not done a lot of stand-up like precast jobs, so this'll be, this is relatively different for me, but not for the office. They've worked with Wells a lot and a lot of other folks.
Just out of curiosity, because we talked about this with some other bids, Midstate, how many employees do they have in Brown Town that would actually, this would affect or is it coming out of Beloit and not?
Yeah, I didn't ask specifically those questions, I certainly can, but yeah, I think when you get into that situation, most of their horsepower, I guess the resources are probably gonna come out of their Beloit offices, have a bigger plant there. They might rely on Brown Town for more, for some part of it, but I wouldn't say necessarily the whole amount would be coming from a local, since it's too much to probably handle, I guess.
Sure, I just wanted to ask, since we addressed that before.
I'll point out to the board, I'm abstained from voting and discussing this one, I've received gifts from one of these contractors before.
Any other questions? So, the recommendation, the unanimous recommendation is to go with Wells and again, that is four hundred and one thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars under budget, under what we anticipated budgeting, so that's also good news.
I'll make a motion.
Second by Terry, second by Phil to award the precast concrete contract to Wells. By voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Gozne and Mike abstained. Alright, so we'll move on to masonry, structural masonry.
Yes, so structural masonry, for those of you that don't know, is basically concrete mason units, so it's block, concrete block. There is no brick in this, the number is just block, so a lot of the structure, CME walls and buildings, et cetera, that's what the scope is for. It does include some of the scope at like the dugouts and some of the athletic fields areas, so that part of work is included in this bid package. We received three bids. JP Cullen was the low contractor, Cornerstone Masonry was the second and KMI is third. So, number two and number three guys are both out of, and gals are out of Jamesville area. KMI is out of Milwaukee area, so I think with either of the low two bidders, you're getting a similar amount of local representation. I do know of some members from each of these companies that do live around this area, so. And then, you know, maybe your first question might be JP Cullen, that's one of your competitors. That is true, they are our competitor as a CM, but we have hired them multiple times for some of their work. We've hired them for structural steel, masonry, I'm sure a couple of other things, but, and I will say that my own experience, I've worked very well with their masonry group back when we did the hospital building, so it was a very similar thing. CG Schmidt was the CM on the project, we hired JP Cullen as the subcontractor for the masonry. I'd say that went successfully, so if it didn't go successfully, obviously, you probably wouldn't see him on this list, so. But, you know, Cornerstone too, I will say that they are an excellent contractor, they probably do, they do a decent amount of our work, certainly more than JP Cullen, so, you know, they have a good group there too as well. Any questions on masonry?
Just have a quick one, under scope review, A and three, winter conditions is excluded? Is there any concern yet with winter conditions for their work?
A little bit, so what I ended up doing for winter conditions, I excluded that, but what I ended up doing is a potential budget for seventy thousand dollars down below. So, one person had it included, others had it excluded, so what I did is to level everything out, I said, okay, we're taking it out of the base bid, we're putting it down below as a budget. If everything went really well, we could maybe get away without winter conditions, but I don't foresee that. I see the tail end of this structural masonry getting into winter conditions a little bit, so that's why we have that budget in there.
Good question, Phil.
Yeah, we've done a lot of work with Cullen, we're doing a lot of work with Cullen. They do a great job. I mean, so same with, you know, I, Cornerstone, we've worked with both of them too and they do a great job also. I think all things being almost equal between the providers, I think price should win. And like I said, we've done hundreds of millions of dollars of work with Cullen and they do a great job, so we can trust in their ability, or I can, at least.
Any other questions or discussion? So, this would be to award the structural masonry contract to JP Cullen for one million six hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars, which is over budget by a hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. With also the low bid on the three bids that we have. Motion by Mike, second by Nikki, to award the structural masonry contract to JP Cullen. By voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Gozne. Motion carries. So, now we'll go to the steel contract fabrication.
Yes, so we have structural steel broken out in the two categories, the last one should say five B, that's my mistake, I apologize about that. You might, so for precast concrete, it's common to have combined supply and erection. Steel is a little bit different in the Madison market, even in the Milwaukee market, you'll see more supply and install contractors. I think mostly in the Madison area, I think it's because of some of our competition, they do a lot of steel erection, so a lot of times you see fabricators just supplying material and then GCs in the area doing their own erection. So, I will call out right away that I strongly encouraged the bidders to provide a combined bid for zero five A and B, so supply and erection. Only one actually supplied an option for that and that would be Enders, number three. That would be Enders and so if you combine their fabrication and installation bid, they're still higher than selecting two separate ones. So, we are in that boat where we are gonna split it up, so it's two different categories. Weldcorp is the low bidder, they're out of the forest area. They have, I didn't spend a little more time with them because of the difference in pricing here, so I did spend more time scoping them out, understanding they have everything and then, and then also I will say that Enders, they had an add on their number, if you see the detailed report, there's a large add to their base bid and that was based on some information I received from them afterwards, that supplier they're using for joists and metal deck doesn't necessarily meet the spec. So, if we need to use specified contractors, then they need to add two fifty to their number. So, that's what the two hundred and fifty thousand is for. You know, if they were a little bit more competitive, I would have probably, you know, tried to see if that was okay with the structural engineer to present that as an option, but even if you took two hundred and fifty thousand off of their number, they're still a little bit off the pace there. So, I think that's, probably has a little bit to do with the big gap, that piece of it, but otherwise, they are apples to apples and Weldcorp is low. What's your experience with Weldcorp? Not very much, to be honest with you. I know they're a small shop, I did check reference, there is somebody on my project team that has worked with them though and knows the owner by first name and he's very responsive, was the response I got, and they do a good job. So, I did talk to him a little bit more about schedule after I heard that was today and he has no concerns about schedule, if they can get going and get the detailing done right away. So, we have some time to do that, so I think, you know, the cost, they're significantly lower, so we do have a little bit extra caution with it, but same time, you know, it was a fair bid process, I can't discard them for, you know, being too low.
You think they have the capabilities?
Yeah, I do, yep. I actually, they've done some work from JP, with JP Cullen, I didn't call them for a reference yet, but they're finishing up a project that is very similar in size to this one.
Where they are?
They are out of the forest.
I've not worked with Weldcorp, to be honest, the Madison market, Enders kinda dominates a lot of times on jobs and I was surprised to see them as high as they were on this job, but if CG Schmidt has done their due diligence and thinking that they can meet schedule and meet scope, then I'm okay with trusting that. Again, we're looking at a little bit here and so with a considerable gap between the next bid, so I can't really speak to it beyond that because I've not worked with Weldcorp.
Have they done school projects before?
I'm sure they have, I don't know for certain. You know, I will say this, that the owner has a lot of experience in this market, so the owner, his name's Tom, had previously worked for many years at Enders and then also worked at McFarland, which is another competitor, I'm surprised I didn't get a bid from them, honestly. So, he's been in the Madison market doing the same thing just for other company, or for other, yeah, for other companies. I asked him today, you know, roughly how old is your company and it's about ten years right now. I think they're coming up on their ten-year anniversary this year.
Felt like the two bids were apples to apples.
Is there an opportunity to dig into that alternate Joyce and Dex supplier with Weldcorp as well and bring it down even lower?
I did, I checked the specs and they're carrying New Millennium, New Millennium is in the spec, but you're right, you know, at this point in time, I could, once we make an award, we could pursue that. Normally, what we do with like voluntary alternate type of situations, and this is what I would consider one of those, would be a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar voluntary alternate to go to somebody that isn't in the spec. To make it fair, that bidder has priority for that alternate, you know what I mean? So, like that can make their bid more enticing, if you wanna say it that way. So, that's theirs and that's proprietary to them to a certain extent, but if that not, isn't a part of the decision-making process and we select Weldcorp, I'll ask that question and pursue that. Does that make sense?
I would say in general, ask the structural designer to look into that if there's that significant a difference between the selected material and an alternate.
Yep, absolutely, and I will say too that, you know, I'm not sure that Enders got a number from New Millennium, I didn't ask, so maybe it was a situation where, you know, Enders just doesn't work with the supplier that Weldcorp works with, so it could be that situation, it's not necessarily a for sure, you know, savings from Weldcorp to the other supplier. Or, no, sorry, New Millennium to the other supplier.
Any other questions, discussion?
Ryan, I'm curious, the way you framed that gave me just a little bit of pause, you said if they did their due diligence, then you don't have concerns? So, we're just hearing what we're hearing tonight, so based on what you're hearing, do you feel confident that they've done it?
I think, I mean, this is the process, right? Like it's just getting in touch with them, deep diving with the company itself, obviously relevant work, recent relevant work, what they're able to produce, and then references, there's just reaching out and calling out people that they've worked with. So, it sounds like from Tony's perspective, they've been doing that and they have the information. I did not know that coming into this meeting, so I'm happy to hear that, to hear kind of the background, because that was just a company I just had not heard of on that list and so it sounds like they've done their due diligence and that we should be good. You know, I think that's, a ten-year-old company trying to move up in project size is sometimes things like this are the perfect opportunity for them and for us, that way we can find some savings and they can kinda break a threshold and start being considered for a job, so it sometimes results in savings to our project as they show the world that they can take on something a little bit larger, so.
And a couple of things to add to that, so, you know, when you get in these types of situations, awareness for us and our management team to make sure we spend the extra time with them to develop the sequence and make sure that the sequences are in chunks that are manageable. So, we'll probably get their fabrication started a little bit earlier if we can, so that we can, we can make sure that the smaller shop can handle it. And I will say too, I've done this similarly, broken record here, but in town with a different smaller fabricator, they didn't bid this project Custom Iron Works out of Beloit, they were a smaller shop too and similar situation really, they were pretty low at the Mineral Clinic Edition we did here about five, four or five years ago. And we just worked diligently with them and it turned out to be a great success. So, just because they're a smaller contractor doesn't mean they're capable and just like Ryan said, if they're looking to prove themselves, it might be the, you know, the best thing for us, actually, so. But, we will proceed with caution if chosen, of course, and if there's any bumps in the road, we'll make sure we analyze those bumps extra carefully.
Yeah, I think if we stay on the front foot with the shop drawing process and the detailing, giving them the most amount of fabrication time in the shop with the correct details, I think that it's setting them up for success, so that they're not, you know, panning into a corner, trying to produce more than they can, but giving them as long of a lead time and make sure that we're on top of our shop reviews and cemental reviews and the detailing that they need to make those pieces, so.
Those things will help manage their timeline.
Motion by Phil, two, and do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Jim and we'll just say this is the steel fabrication and it would be to Weldcorp and it is under budget, eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seventeen seventeen dollars, so significantly under budget. Again, we have a motion by Phil and a second by Jim to award the steel fabrication contract to Weldcorp. All those in favor, by voice vote, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Gozne. Motion carries. And finally, we have the structural steel installation bid package, contract, I guess.
Yep, so it's everything we just talked about, but the installation of those materials, so, and I did not mention, but I will here, this is structural steel, usually there's a miscellaneous metals package and that will be bid in the future here, once the architectural drawings get finished, so they very potentially could be another fabricator and erector on the project, but that's more specific stuff to kinda architecturally, stairs and railings and things like that on the inside of the building, that is not fully designed yet. So, again, this is just structural steel, we got five bids, so we got some good interest in this. The two low bidders were very competitive. The capital steel erectors is out of Blue Mounds, SPE is out of Little Shoe to Enders, I don't know who their sub was, I didn't bother to go that far, but they're right there too. As far as, but they probably wouldn't take the subcontracted work, I will say that. I didn't confirm that, but they probably will not take the subcontracted work if they're not awarded, you know, the fabrication, which we just... So, ultimately, I think we need to take Enders off this list for valuation as a part of this discussion, so we're really down to four bidders. And JP Cullen and Kerry are the ones that rounded out the top. We do work with capital, or capital erectors, decent amount, I've worked with them in the past on a few projects. I have not worked with SPE, but I know they have a good reputation, I know us as a company, we've worked with them before too, quite a bit, so they're capable. JP Cullen, of course, like everything we said before, what Ryan was saying is they're capable contractors.
Tony, if schedules are managed properly by you guys with the overtime precast schedule, potentially not be an expense for the district?
Possibly. Possibly, yep. So, the way we looked at that was one of the bidders thought due to the... So the way we looked at that was one of the bidders thought due to the schedule that, you know, they would need to have some overtime probably to, to meet that schedule. Usually what we do is we set a milestone schedule out there for the bidders to, to bid off of. So they know roughly when their, their scope is happening. And then we bring them in and we do what we call a pull session. Where we bring everybody together, sequence all the work, put sticky notes up on the board, kind of make sure you're going first, I'm going second in this area, and carry on. We would probably be aware of whether we need to use a lot of that enough money or not at that time. But you never really know until you get through that, that work category. So again, what I ended up doing was taking that out of the one bidder to make everything level and then added it as a budget down below. So it was a fairly recognized amongst all bidders.
And you folks are familiar with, you work with capital steel?
Yep.
Yep, yep, we work, Capital just had a job with them that wrapped up this, well, last summer.
Any additional questions? It looks like the recommendation is to award the structural steel insulation contract to Capital, which again is $596,425 under budget. Motion by Mike, second by Jim toward the steel insulation contract to Capital. By all those in favor, by voice, vote, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For both's name, motion carries. Thank you all for that, appreciate that time.
If you guys want to just hang for a couple of minutes, we're just going to do an update on the next agenda.
And I know, I'll just say quickly, we know you said there's other bids coming up, but what percentage of the bids are done?
Go ahead, Tony.
Steel and my thunder. So should I get into the next agenda? You know, it's, it's, it's.
It's, it's, it's okay. You, you want to go ahead and start the next agenda and we can get on that.
I'll answer your question. I can, or, you know, 29% left to bid, on a comment board.
Yeah, I think, I didn't run the exact total, I think Big did earlier. But if you didn't say, I think we're, on those five bids we just did, it was roughly 2.1 million?
Yeah, just under that, yep.
Yep. Under budget.
Under budget, that's what I had too.
Yep, for that, sure, thank you. Yeah, so great, great news, really. I'll expand on that just a little bit. So I, I will say, you, you haven't, we haven't presented 71% of bids yet. We've presented about 46% through tonight. So what accounts for that extra to get us to 71% committed or accounted for is, so we got these bids. We've got all the markups and CG Schmidt's general conditions that are accounted for. We also have a, a lot of those bid package three athletic fields bids are in. Now, we're still going through some of those because they're a lot more detailed and a lot more spec-like sensitive, I guess I'll call it. Because of the different manufacturers and, and things. So in some areas, we didn't get as good bid coverage as, as, as we thought. So like for tennis, tennis coat surfaces, for example, never got a bid. So I got to go back out and try to get more bids. A couple of categories, I only got one bid. Some categories got great bid coverage. But I'm claiming those bids as being accounted for. They're in, they're being vetted, maybe the next ones that are presented here. So I'm contributing those bids that I haven't been prepared for, as a 71%. So 71% is accounted for, 29% isn't. And I think that's, and to say we're under budget through that 71% is, is, or at budget, I should say. Under budget what we presented, at budget overall. And just to back up a little bit on that process, for that last 29%, what we've done right now is we've had our estimating team take an updated look at those categories. So that in large is interior finishes, anything from, and a little bit exterior too. But anything from windows to roofing and then inside the envelope of the building. So flooring, case, doors hardware, you name it, inside the building, that's yet to bid. So our estimating team took the most recent set of drawings, took a look at that 29% and checked those numbers against the previous budget, someone up, someone down. All in all, we're, we're right at budget right now. The whole project considered. So I, I will caveat to say, like, everything that we presented here has been great news for the most part, under budget, which is wonderful. It's a huge relief for management and, and I'm sure some of you folks as well, because it is a budget-sensitive project. I will say that there are some categories that are over that are coming though. Nothing that's going to break the bank, of course, but, you know, no, nothing to the tune of maybe one, to the tune of $800,000, like electrical. But most of them are, are less than that, a couple, $200,000 to $500,000 over. But on the flip side, we have some that are under. But as a whole, the stuff remaining appears to be over a little bit, with respect to that chunk. That, that being said, we don't have bids in on, on most of it too. So we could see different results on the bids coming.
But you're projecting with that 29%. You've gone back and revisited that, you're projecting to be at budget and.
Yep, yep.
So just a couple of quick things here. And Ron, you've been more involved with this too, but, so work at Abe started literally the day after the teacher in-service was done. Offices removed and crews moved in. And, and so that's, that's going to add at the idea, of course, that the work will be all finished by the fall. No pressure, Tony. So. Yeah, so Sarah, how do you like your new digs over at Parkside?
They're very welcoming.
Good neighbors, you got a good neighbor, yeah, okay. All right. So we, we will be scheduling a session, it's either going to be July or August. We keep talking about the legacy items or things that we want noted in the new building from the, from the previous campus. So that's going to be coming, it's still not scheduled, but it will be. They've been doing topsoil removal and scraping on the site. And the weather held us back a little bit, which might work to our advantage hopefully in the next couple of weeks. The way things are rolling, we can talk about that at another meeting. Tony's been on top of getting the required permits and, and getting approval for those different processes that have to happen within the construction timeline. Ron, Jeremy and Rich spent some really exciting time looking at door hardware and lock systems for the high school. It's probably five or six hours of your life you'll never get back, but once it's done right, it's done forever.
Got one more meeting, yeah.
You can feel the excitement, okay? You know, Ron, Ron and Rich and Eric have been working on the food service area. And I think they're just about designed with the furniture, they're done with the design furniture and stuff there yet, or are you guys close?
Uh, the equipment, I should say, not, not so much the furniture, but yeah, all the, all the equipment that goes in the kitchen.
Okay. We are still in negotiations about the potential North Road access. And we, we, we got some things that are on timelines based on how the, the project's going on. So we hope to have some news on that in the next month, sooner if possible. Let's see, we're, we're giving the contractors, they're doing some of the pre-design. We're giving a little time to, to really dig deep into some of these things over the next week and a half, two weeks. So it's not that we're putting anything on hold as much as we're giving them some space to really look at things and look for potential ways to enhance the project and, and potentially find cost savings with high quality, so. We, Ryan already mentioned, we had a, and Chris had the MEP meeting with us, I think, was that Wednesday afternoon we did that? And we had a focus on energy individual there and he was talking about the project. And he's basically in the project right where he needs to be as we start. So, and now that we'll have electrical line, we'll have all three of the contractors MEP in there, so. So just a real quick notice, there's a lot of excitement about the site. And it would be nice if, when, when is fence going up?
Right.
Oh, thank you. So it looks really tempting for somebody with a nice four-wheel drive truck to maybe go in off of the breaker and check it out. So, okay, looking forward to having the fence up. But if people are going to come and view the site on 31st, take some pictures, do whatever. And I know you guys are going to do something with the, with your drone to kind of take weekly or bi-weekly or some type of, you'll GPS the pattern and then do the same thing through the project so we can have a time lapse video as this is going on.
I'll present that to the group later, monthly is what I was going for.
Not daily?
Just trying to watch budget, I mean, we can talk about that, of course. But, yeah, currently I have a plan for monthly. That can change if needed.
And then, and then Tony brought up, you know, the budgeting process. And, you know, there's 29% left to assign. And we're, we're on a schedule where we, we expect to be at budget on this project, just all set, so. And then Tony, I was going to ask you this too, when are we thinking that we might be getting the, the GMP, guaranteed maximum price? Are we looking, we back now in, in end of July or early August here?
Yeah, it's going to be later than that, actually. I know there's talk about that landscaping package being pushed out a little bit. I don't want to steal anybody's thunder here, but the landscaping, there's, there's some landscaping scope that is in question with some of the codes at the city level. From what I understand, that they're, they're revisiting those codes and potentially changing them. If those did change, that would reduce some of the construction costs. So at this point in time, it's been suggested to us to just sit tight on the landscaping package and maybe bid that out a, a month later. What that would be, do, that, that would probably be into the August before we even probably get those drawings, is my guess at this point in time. That, that timeframe is, is very rough though, and nobody's committed to anything on that. Because of that, that's going to push our GMP a little bit further into after September, for certain. If, if that landscaping package gets pushed out. If not, and it, it gets bid out with the remaining scope, I'd say we should target September for our GMP.
Ron, anything else to add? So everybody's been pretty busy. We all kind of have our areas that we've been pushing at. Jeremy is not sleeping like for the last couple of months now either, as he's getting some of the fine detail stuff done too, so. And then graduated a great class too, so. But that's, that's all I got for the update for now.
Question on that GMP, like, contractually, I would think it's in our best interest to lock you guys in as much as possible to that price as soon as possible. And waiting on landscaping, does that, and I guess this is more for Ryan, does that give opportunity for the price to change on other areas where we should be locking that in and maybe leaving allowance for landscaping?
Well, as we're doing bid packages and we, we're locking our subs at, in as we go. Hopefully if we break out landscaping, that hopefully is the only thing that's hovering out there that is, is last variable. And if the city does, they're going to rewrite. Their verbiage on landscaping requirements, if it's as favorable as we're hoping that it might be, it could be a considerable savings. So I think it's worth pursuing. And because the, the alternate to that would be create an alternate, meaning in the, we think we know what they're going to do. It's just not finalized yet. So we're putting in the landscaping, going to bid with landscaping as it's currently designed, kind of maximum amount. And we put in an alternate for something that's less. The problem with that is, at that point, once you have someone and they have to switch to the alternate after you've, you've got them in, it's not going to be dollar-for-dollar savings at that point. So if we're able to actually lock in with what the new zoning is, if it does indeed change, which it sounds like it's going to, I think it's just a matter of time, we will be much better suited to extract every dollar of savings we can from that change, if that makes sense. If we, by pausing a little bit on that one. And there were some things wrapped up in landscaping as, as it normally is, like sight lighting, as in those type of things. And so we've, we've talked as a group of like, kind of bifurcating that and splitting out as much things that we can away from landscaping. So that truly at the end of the day, the only thing that we're waiting on is actual landscaping and not landscaping with other things rolled up into it. And so that's the goal, is to try to just milk every penny we can out of this process and, and get it as low as we possibly can. I think the city is, city's on board with what we presented to them, saying this is a very robust requirement for this school, for the amount of landscaping. And when we were able to have a good conversation about it, they were like, you're right, it is, that's a lot. Like that's, that's a, it's very burdensome. And so they were kind enough to revisit how the zoning code was written, so.
And ultimately, it is there going to be their decision. So we're.
At their behest, right?
Yes. Kind of add to what Ryan said too, the, the other reason why we probably don't want to spend, do the alternate is because you're speculating and you're spending design resource money, designing an alternate that we may or may not be what the city ultimately approves. And then to answer your question, Mike, for sure is, yeah, we could absolutely break it out and put in allowance and finalize the GMP if that's what the district wants to do.
I think in 30 to 60 days, we're going to have a better deal for the city code lines.
Sounds like, yeah, I, I think Sonia Vanderwall, who does a lot of that work for the city, is working on it. And so it's a pretty dense piece of zoning code landscaping, as it's not like a handful of paragraphs, it's many pages. And so I think there's just a lot to review and, and think through and write, so. One thing I would just add, since just giving updates, is that I circulated what's called RFP, Request for Proposals, within the internal group of, of like the project team, including admin and for new furniture services. So we're just trying to put together the list of vendors that the district is interested in. Design team who's had good working relationships with furniture vendors. And then we have, for sure have a list of furniture vendors that we love, that we've worked with. And so get a Request for Proposals out to them to get them on board during this final design push into construction so that we can ensure that the furniture is coordinated with the layouts, obviously, but also with MEP coordination. So make sure that if we're planning for a chair in this corner, that it has data and it has power and it has all those type of things, so. So that's, it's a collaborative, that effort is collaborative between the design team, that's existing PRA, and the furniture vendor to work together. Kind of a, almost like a design assist, kind of like we're doing with trade management with the APs. It's very similar with the furniture and the architecture team, and coming together, make sure it's all coordinated and the best items are picked. And then it's presented as submittals to the district. And, and you guys can say, we really like those, or we want samples of those, or, you know, we want to visit somewhere where this is set up, or, you know, whatever the case may be, you know, it's a work of that process.
Any other questions or updates from the team? Well, thanks for all your work on this and thanks for the updates, appreciate it. Yeah, thank you. So next is informational items. Ruby's not here, she's graduated, and so she is not with us. Boardsmanship administration.
So we, we have some transfers we're just going to mention. Angel Steele from Abraham Lincoln, first grade, is transferring to Parkside to teach first grade for next year. Alyssa Quinn from Abraham Lincoln, second grade. Abe is going to go to first grade, Abe. And then Summer Steeds, I might not be saying that name right, is that how you say it, Steeds, Summer Steeds, okay. She's from Abe Lincoln, she's the building secretary, and she's moving to the Abraham Lincoln Accounting Secretary. So those are three, three transfers, internal transfers.
And two are just moving within Abe.
Correct.
I have not been told of any board correspondence. Any reports? Mike?
Nothing for me?
No?
Nothing for you?
Only thing, I just was privileged to be able to hand out diplomas and give the senior class their diplomas as they go on. And my own daughter was one of them, so.
Congratulations on the graduating senior class.
Yeah, I will be doing ERC tonight.
Again, we talked about it, but we had curriculum met at 5:30 tonight and had a great presentation from all of the administration and Joe and Todd on the summary of the year. And Data.
EIE has not met. I got to volunteer at Parkside for their end of the year celebration. It was a lot of fun and it was very well turned out.
Items for future agenda items. News on reports. Five minutes for the press. And if that will take the motion to adjourn, we will be going into closed session. And I don't believe we will have any action coming out of closed session. So we will dismiss from closed session. To go into closed session for Wisconsin statute 1985, paragraph 1, paragraph C, considering employment promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation dated any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to it administrator exempted compensation discussion. So I have 9/11. Make a motion.
So, a second.
So, 9/11, a motion by Nikki and a second by Phil to move into closed session according with statute for the purpose of discussing administrator exempted compensation. We do a roll call about two minutes of the close, Nikki, yes?
Yes. Nikki, yes, Jim?
Yes.
Rich?
Absent.
Absent, Eric?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned and going into closed.
Thanks, guys.